I have a couple more that could happen. It all takes my time, um, I appreciate my wife and her support. You know, when you're in education and when you're coaching and teaching like a lot of you are, you know you have a family to support you and understands the commitment that you make. And so that's been solid and steady, uh, for thirty something years. Don't use that again, Sam. For a long, long time. Um, my- Something a year ago, he decided that he was gonna invest in me. And at that time, I needed some direction, I needed some guidance, I needed some to talk about. And he's made a tremendous impact on my life, and I can proudly say we are still friends today. We fish together. He does most of the talking, and I do most of the catching. But he is a true and loyal friend, and I thank God for him taking the time to invest in someone and help my career in my life in a positive way. Thank you, Coach. You know, I said this anonymously, this is not about me, the people that work together with me every day, the people that I've spent time with in the past at different locations that blessed me in a great way, and I've benefited a whole lot more than I've contributed. And this is a special place, these are special people, and, um, I'm just proud to be a small part of it, so thank you very much.
Item one point zero three, approval of amendments of the regular session of the board for April fourth, twenty nineteen.
Go ahead.
Have a motion by Mrs. Ruffin, a second by Mrs. Darby, please vote. Motion carries. I have one point zero four, approval of amendments of the special session of the board for April eighth, twenty nineteen. So move. Have a motion by Mr. Newman, and a second by Mrs. Smith, please vote. Motion carries. I have one point zero five, approval of the agenda for the regular session of the board for April eighteenth, twenty nineteen. Have a motion by Mr. Wiggins, a second by Mr. Blockhouse, please vote. Motion carries. Moving on to item two point zero one, recognitions and presentations, we have Bojor Parish School's recipients presented by Sockville's Public Relations Liaison.
Good evening, President Cheevo, Superintendent Dowey, all of our school board members, and all of our audience here this evening, we have so many reasons to celebrate here tonight, even though the school year is winding down, the accolades just keep on coming for both Bojor Parish students and our educators. First of all, I want to take a quick look back over the last two weeks in review. We begin first of all with Sister Act Jasmine Harris Washington from Parkway High School. They are the recent oldest champs for a second year in a row. Their double team played forty-eight consecutive games without losing a single game. That's pretty amazing. So the Sunday Tuba will be back on the courts, uh, next Friday and Saturday where they will be playing for the state championship, so good luck and again, congratulations, uh, to Jasmine and Paris Washington. Caleb Seatora, he has the beat. The Airline High School senior auditioned and recently under contract with the Drone Four International Louisiana Stars, which is a professional marching ensemble that performs at the highest level, they tour nationwide. And Caleb is going to be competing this summer as a tuba player with the Louisiana Stars. And what is really neat here, pretty amazing actually, is Caleb just picked up the tuba nine months ago, when he joined Airline's mighty Vanguard Band, so congratulations to Caleb. And it was a complete shutout at the National Archery and Schools Program State Tournament with Bojor Parish teams taking home the top prize in every division. We are the state champions across the board, Benton Elementary, Benton Metal, and Hutton High School, all won first place in both the bullseye and the three D competitions in each of the divisions, making them state champions. We had the elementary, middle, and high school state champions, but the third one had no competition. And on top of that, several archers won individual categories as well, they even brought home college scholarships totaling within seventeen thousand dollars. So congratulations to all of them, we are so proud, talk about getting the award now, right? And Bojor Parish School for Technology and Innovative Learning has yet another reason, well, make that twenty-eight reasons to be proud, after students had a phenomenal showing at the State Skills USA Competition held earlier this month in South Louisiana. So I'm gonna ask them to start coming forward, and I'd also like to ask I, Superintendent, and President Cheevo to join me in the front to help me with an awards presentation. So give a little background about the State Skills USA. It gives students from across the state a chance to compete against their peers by demonstrating their knowledge and skills in various areas. And the goal of this national partnership of students, teachers, as well as industry representatives, is to ensure that the United States and Louisiana, and more specifically Bojor Parish, has a skilled workforce. Benton Steel students brought home twenty-eight medals altogether at the state level, fifteen gold, six silver, and seven bronze. Let's give them all big hands. They knocked it out of the park. And the students that you see here before you are being recognized because they brought home the gold to Bojor Parish. They won the gold medal, and so we want to present to them our own Medal of Honor, if you will, the Award of Excellence Medal for twenty eighteen nineteen on behalf of Bojor Schools and our partners, Caldwell Bank for Godly. So I'm gonna call your names, and if you'll just kind of raise your hands, our audience can see each of you. Our gold medalists are William Jackson from Benton High School in Automotive Service Technology, Oscar Gonzalez from Hutton High in Carpentry, Paul Cordebo from Parkway in Carpentry, right? Brian Pletto Escarta from Airline in Carpentry, Andrew Ward from Hutton High School, Collision Repair Technology, Al Jatri Fugue from Airline, Health Knowledge Gold, Sister McCallum from Parkway, Health Knowledge Gold, Caitlin Dolan from Airline, Caitlin won two medals in Health Knowledge Gold, Little Miss Snow, Airline High School, Medical Assistant, Madison Raff from Airline, won two medals in Medical Terminology, Breonna Judge from Airline High School, Photography, Avery Davis, Benton High School, Power Equipment Technology, Summer Trigger, Parkway High School, TV Production, eighteen, it's funny they call it on the eighteen, right? Caleb Lippin, Parkway High School, TV Production, eighteen, and Will Gibb, Convent Brothers from Airline High School in Welding. Let's give all of them a round of applause. So we are so proud of you, and hope that you also wear these medals with pride and heart fingers, even perhaps with your robes when you graduate next month, because it truly is an honor to be able to receive one of those Award of Excellence. And, uh, now I would also mention that these gold medal winners are going to represent Benton Steel as well as Bojor Parish Schools at the national competition, the National Skills USA Competition that's going to be held this summer in Louisville, Kentucky. So we are excited about that, and look forward to being able to honor them at the national level when they come home with the gold. Let's give them another round of applause and congratulate them. Thank you so much, and again, we are rooting for you at nationals. Finally this evening, recognizing the best stuff according to the readers of the Bojor Fresh Tribune. Now each year, the Bojor Fresh holds its annual Reader's Choice Awards, and here tonight to announce those is publisher Randy Brown. If you will, please help me welcome Randy Brown to the podium.
Thank you, Sonny. It's a pleasure to be here. I often visit my home here and meet people who do this. Uh, our Reader's Choice Awards are done in February, we survey our readers. Uh, this is our twentieth annual, we've been doing this a long time. And, uh, we're proud to do it. Last year, we offered a whole lot of votes for the first time in a week. And, uh, this year, our whole lot voting is for all of the charts, so it's even more votes that we have in the final vote. We're proud to partner with Bojor Schools, we get a lot of opportunities. And Sonny said there's always something going on. On good with Bojor Schools, they give us a lot of good opportunities to cover if things happen. So we're proud to do that. We're proud to be a partner again this year, and after the R-T-S was second here in a row, and, uh, we look forward to the opportunity we have and work with Bojor Schools. Thank you. My staff did these for me, and they're in categorical order, but I don't place their orders hard, uh, stock of middle school, so let's just see what happens. We have as a finalist in the middle school category, in Oak Grove Middle School, in the Hutton Middle School, winner this year, first place in the middle school category, is Green Acres Middle School. Next school principal. This is Brad, sorry, in the middle, in the principal category, we have Richard Warren from Hutton Middle School, Arthur James from Green Acres, Jason Norwood from Airline High, I think the top of the fourth position here, another story strength, and it may be this four. Okay, in the house school category, we have Parkway House School's finalists, Hutton House School's finalists, we have for the twentieth year, uh, twentieth year, twenty years we've been doing this, is Airline House School. Two more categories to go here, in the elementary school category, we got the Dudley Lewis Elementary finalists, and we're in for the nineteenth year out of the twenty years we've been doing this, so the Fall Elementary. And the last category is our favorite school teacher. We got Maggie Hewitt, finalists from Platte Elementary. She has won this last two years, it's funny. Miss Schumoff from Hutton Middle School. First place, Robert Vaughn from Green Acres Middle School. Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
I just want to take the opportunity real quick to thank the Bojor Fresh Tribune for being such a wonderful media partner, before you walk out that door, Randy Brown, and sharing the, I'm good, some good news at Bojor Schools. They are truly unparalleled when it comes to their commitment to our school system and our community. So thank you so much, Randy Brown and Bojor Fresh Tribune.
Thank you, Sonny. Item two point zero two, recognition Bojor Retired Teachers Scholarship Recipients presented by Monroe Bojor Retired Teachers Association.
Good evening. I'm Laura Irvin, and I am the Bojor Retired Teachers Chairperson for the Scholarship Committee, and we're proud to be here tonight to present some scholarships to four recipients. I have with me tonight, uh, Ament Lee, who is our president of the Bojor Parish Retired Teachers Association. Tonight, we'll present four two hundred and fifty dollar scholarships. The criteria for applying was to be a senior in Bojor Parish High Schools, a minimum of three point O GPA, plan to pursue a bachelor's degree in education at Louisiana College or University, and commit to entering the teaching profession. All four recipients have high GPAs and ACT scores, academic awards and honors, and involvement in numerous school organizations and community involvement. When your name is called, if you will come to the front to receive a certificate and information packet on your scholarship, and please remain at the front for a group picture of the recipients. Kaylee Smith. Kaylee attends Airline High School, and will be attending Louisiana Tech University, pursuing a double major in education and mathematics through the UTEACH program. Kaylee stated, for as long as I can remember, I've wanted to pursue a degree in education. My grandma was a teacher for forty-five years, my mom was a special ed teacher, and both my sisters are teachers. The best people in my life have taught me to love learning and teaching, and that's what we hope to accomplish. Samantha McCoy. Samantha attends Benton High School, and will be attending Louisiana Tech University, pursuing a secondary education degree. And Samantha stated, I've learned more about who I am, what I want to be, and what I believe in, since English teacher, after English teacher provoked me to analyze real world topics and discuss everything in them. Because of this, I desire to be deep into a student's mind and make them dig into themselves. These are the future generations, and if someone does not allow them to learn who they are and be able to back it up, then they will easily let someone else define them. This is something we do not need more of in our society. I am determined to help produce more of what our society needs in these future generations of students, and this is why I desire to go into teaching. Isabel Smith. Isabel attends Hutton High School, and will be attending Louisiana Tech University, pursuing a major in kinesiology to teach sports medicine or physical education. Isabel stated, school is a major part of everyone's life, both young adults, and it's where we spend the majority of our time during our childhood. Children begin to develop motor skills and relationships with people who have not been a part of their life before. For someone who does not like school, this would be tough on a relationship with others, as well as their learning achievement in life. This is why I want to become a teacher. I want to develop a learning atmosphere where children feel happy and secure with their surroundings. Congratulations to them. Bailey May. Bailey attends Parkway High School, and will attend Louisiana Tech University, majoring in ele- elementary education. Bailey stated, both my parents are in the school system, and hearing from my peers the impact that my mom or dad is having in the classroom or the football field makes them want to follow in their footsteps and have those same moments in the future. I want to become a teacher because I want to create future leaders for our community. I love my community of South Bojor, and I am proud of the way others in my community have shaken. After graduating from college, I found I'm going nowhere else other than my hometown to pursue my dreams of becoming an educator. All four of our recipients will be attending Louisiana Tech, that's the first of the four that we have. And we know that these students could not have excelled without the strong support from their home and from their teachers, so if you are a member of their family or a teacher who taught one of these young ladies, if you would stand in his presence. Thank you for your influence that you've had on them. Also, thank you to the Bojor Parish School Board for continuing to provide the programs that you do, encouraging our students to continue their education, and to come back and hopefully be a teacher in Bojor Parish School System. And thank you for the Bojor Retired Teacher Association, who they come up with a small amount of money to be able to put out these scholarships, and we're very proud of being able to do that each year, and we hope that we'll continue to have more applicants each year wanting to be a teacher. So Kathy, can we get our pictures and then all the group and thank you, School Board.
Item two point zero three, recognition BoTeo Monroe Middle Student Scholarship Foundation Scholarship Recipients presented by Willie Blackchow.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say congratulations to our new secretary-tendent, Mr. Dowey, to the president of the board and all board members. Thank you on behalf of the C-Mass- Thank you on behalf of the CMass Foundation for allowing us to come tonight and make this presentation. To those of you who are familiar with the foundation, it was started by the late Lotte Monroe, who was blessed and fortunate enough to come into a large amount of money through oil, royalties, and gas. Mrs. Monroe was a devout supporter of young people and education, so we can't classify her as a philanthropist. The Board has authorized me to give five scholarships tonight, and our regular selection, we give only three. And I ask for special consideration in having two additional recipients tonight because of these young people. We had nurtured them from just about preschool up to where they are tonight. So, I would like to say that we're very proud of them. I'm reminded of one of our retired teachers, Mrs. Partner, who wrote a recommendation for one of these students, and she said, "You know, they may not have all the As 4.0, but they have something of equal value, and that is character, courage, and conviction." And so, all of them come tonight. Some of them had hardships that they had to overcome. One of our recipients, and I believe my grandparent had approved of me to say this, lost both of her parents at a young age in a car accident. Her grandmother stepped in, and she has brought her to this point, and thank God for grandmothers. One of our recipients is the daughter of a single parent who works for Bojor Parish School System. She works hard every day, and she has reached this milestone with her daughter. One of our other recipients is an accomplished musician. He made 30th on the ACT, and he has a 4.0 average. We have another recipient who has all the As on her transcript, and she has done very well. One that is not here tonight, she's homeless. So, they have had some hardships in their lives, and they have overcome. And I'm very honored to make this presentation tonight. We're going to present $20,000 worth of scholarships tonight. Now, if you can come and help to extend this appreciation to these young people, when I call your name, please come forward. The Superintendent will give you the information that you will need, your certificate, to be able to get these funds. Our first recipient is Essie Douglas. Essie from Long Island School, and she wants to major in criminal justice. Our next recipient is David Dowery tonight. He said, "Make it, make it." Okay, David, we did make it. David is going into computer education, and he plays violin and guitar. Our next recipient is Cynthia Tabo. Cynthia wants to go into the medical field, and she wants to be a surgeon, and she's from Parkway High School. Our next recipient is Nia Liggins Shaw, and she's from LA High School. Nia is from Lakeview Biology, but the mother in psychology, and other recipients wasn't able to be here tonight. The only thing that the Board is requesting of all of you is to pass this act of kindness on to someone else when you reach your final destination. Thank you.
Item 2.04, recognition Bojor Parish School Board Scholarship Recipients presented by Sandra Darby, Scholarship Committee Chairperson.
The Bojor Parish School Board established the Board Scholarship Fund in 1995 to actively give scholarships to graduating seniors of Bojor Parish schools who would be majoring in education and would be entering the teaching profession. Beginning in 2008, additional scholarships were established to give to students completing programs at our Bojor Schools for technology, innovative learning, who would be further in their education in those areas. The Board Scholarships are not endowed scholarships, so funds must be procured. The Scholarship Fund is generously supported by contributions made by community supporters, by members of the Bojor Parish School Board, and through memorial donations. We also have memorial scholarships that are endowed by the family or organizations of other named scholarships. And at this time, we would like to recognize and thank our community supporters and those who provide memorial scholarships for their investment in our students. Bojor Association of Educators, Simonton National Bank, Kevin Bryant Architect LLC, Helen Seals, Atkins &amp; Dyke, Marmore &amp; Company, Newman Marchal &amp; Carlos &amp; Company, SGP Architects LLC, W.G. Yates &amp; Sons Construction Company, Jason and Kimmy Smith in memory of Billy G. Smith. And we also have some special acknowledgements at the end, but at this time, when we call any name, we would like you to come forward and receive your scholarship. Samantha McCoy from Benton High School. Kaylee Smith, Airline High School. Michael Kummer, Airline High School. Hal Mayfield, Carolina High School. Ben May, Parkway High School. Avery Jeffco, Airline High School. Garrison Wade, Airline High School. And at this time, we would like to acknowledge our, we would like to do a special acknowledgement, and it goes to Representative Henry Barnes, the Benjamin A.J. Barnes Memorial Scholarship, and we would like for him to come up and present his scholarship.
Mr. President, this is Superintendent, Board Members. There's actually a couple of you that I served with back in the day. Sam and I had a little stage in D.W., and there's someone over here called Lou Dog. Anyway, it was really an honor and truly great to be in y'all's presence. And thank you so much, and you gave me a few games for my children, who all have been probably being very protective. And to counter a little bit, all my recipients, I'll get that now, all my recipients will be going to go question. Anyway, it's really an honor. My mom fought for 31 years, my dad was a school board member of Bojor Parish, and so I was a school board member regular year. I just thought it would be right to honor them. And the requirement we have is that the students go to go question, major in education, and grant them, hopefully, if I can get you. Anyway, someone who is for intellectual opponent, I said, "Two, nine, eight."
In recognition of being awarded the Nobel Prize in A.J. Barron Scholarship, goes to Natalie Stevenson.
We'd also like to acknowledge Barbara Wardman, the Pat Wardman Scholarship. If someone is here from there, would you like them to come and present the scholarship as well? If not, I will ask for it. They can't come down and present, so I would like to ask Superintendent. This scholarship goes to Elizabeth Stone. Lauren Knight, Parkway High School. Thank you. Congratulations.
One way or the other.
We'll give them just another second to exit, and then we'll get started with our next item. At this time, item 3.01 requests consider approval of Superintendent's contract presented by St. Chetum, Board President. At this time, we do have two people that have signed up to speak and comment. I'm going to allow them each to come up and have their three minutes to speak, and we will go from there. The first person that signed up to speak is Mr. Spencer Kuiper.
Good evening. Superintendent-elect Downey, Board Members. I am Spencer Kuiper. Many of you know me already as the STEM teacher at Elm Grove Middle School and the 2019 Louisiana State Teacher of the Year. But tonight, I come to you as one of the lead organizers for the Bojor Education Coalition. You might have seen our efforts to support Bojor Schools and the upcoming May 4th salary proposition on Facebook. Our mission is to inform the public about the importance of supporting Bojor Schools while at the same time giving Bojor educators and education advocates the platform to elevate their voices. The Coalition wants to take the opportunity to congratulate you, Superintendent-elect Downey, as being selected to be our Superintendent. We're proud to have you as our leader. Now, more than ever, it's important for our leaders and our employees at Bojor Schools to band together. Our message to you, the Board and Superintendent-elect, we stand with you Bojor Strong and Bojor United. As we move steadfastly toward May 4th, which will be a huge deciding factor that will influence the future trajectory of Bojor Schools, we ask that you be vigilant and that your leadership continue to guide our schools and our staff with the innovation and vision that our community has come to expect from our system. The success of Bojor Schools is built on the incredible work that our teachers do every day, our leaders who fight for the best conditions for our students and our employees, and the hundreds of local communities and businesses that understand the value of investing in Bojor Schools. Again, congratulations, Superintendent-elect Downey. We look forward to working with you to continue the success of Bojor Schools. Thank you.
Our next person that has signed up to speak is Meredith McGovern.
Good evening, Superintendent Downey, President Chetum, and fellow Board Members. My name is Meredith McGovern, and while this isn't the first time I've had the opportunity to address you, this is the first time I meet me to you in a different capacity. Along with Spencer Kuiper, I am a lead organizer for the Bojor Education Coalition. We are a grassroots organization with a budget of zero, started by teachers and backed by community members and other stakeholders. That just shows you that teachers can work miracles with nothing, right? So, our goal is to elevate not only teacher voice, but also to elevate and honor the work of employees of Bojor Schools. The Coalition congratulates you, Mr. Downey, on your appointment as Superintendent of what is undoubtedly one of the best parishes for education in the state of Louisiana. We are proud of the work that Bojor Parish has done to improve the educational outcomes of students in Bojor Parish, and have the full confidence that Superintendent Downey will not only to continue to lead us will not only to continue to lead us down this path, but also take us to higher levels of academic achievement. Without a doubt, Bojor schools are an incredible selling point for Bojor Parish, bringing in not only homeowners, but businesses. This is thanks to the hard work of the dedicated teachers, support staff, administration, and the school board. The twelve members of the school board, along with Mr. Downey and his staff, recognize and honor you for the work being done by employees across this parish. It is in this spirit that we commend them on their bold leadership as they seek to improve salaries for all Bojor school employees in this parish with the May Fourth vote. Make no doubt that this is a vital need for all employees within the Bojor school system. Supporters within the Bojor Education Coalition are working with community members at every school in our parish to hold early voting spirit days next week. The Coalition would like to invite every school board member to join us within your district as we go to the voting booth to show our support for Bojor education. We thank you for your support and look forward to working with you in the future to elevate Bojor schools and their employees. Once again, congratulations, Mr. Downey, on your appointment, and we look forward to working with you.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve Superintendent Downey's contract as drafted and authorize you as president of the board to execute the contract. Is that my question? Have a motion by Mr. Newman, have a second by Mr. Wiggins. Please vote. Motion carries. Item 3.02, approval of trip request.
These are in order, Mr. President.
Have a motion by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Smith. Please vote. Motion carries. Item 3.03, request, enter into executive session pursuant to LARS 4217 to discuss the status and strategy concerning prospective litigation involving hand construction related to a claim concerning the HVAC system and the ban on the Hawkins Middle School and the school board's prior written demand. Have a motion by Ms. Brotherton, second by Mr. Bullard. Please vote. Motion carries. We are now in executive session.